If we could go through like a roll call, so I'm Bob Davis, Commissioner, Hospital District, number one.
Director Lebanon, Commissioner, Hospital District, number one.
Matt Altman, Commissioner, Hospital District, number one.
Terry Clark, Commissioner, Hospital District, number one.
Scott O'Leary.
Mandy Olsen, Chief Poly Officer.
Kevin Martin, Chief Medical Officer.
Julie Peterson, Chief Executive Officer.
John Ward, Commissioner for Hospital District, number one.
We have Shannon helping out with Mandy. And then with us tonight, we have Vicky, um, Mataro.
Yes.
Brian's here, and then Cheryl, and there's a phone number up there I don't recognize.
Five oh nine eight nine nine six nine two nine.
Um, is there someone there?
Looks like you're muted.
Yeah, I'm, oh, I'm here.
Uh, Terry Barr's there, um.
Who's that? They, somebody said it.
I thought that was not her.
Five oh nine eight nine nine six nine two nine. Who was that?
He often, yeah, I've been joined with this. Yeah.
I, I am here. I am here.
Okay.
And who is that?
Yeah, my name is Stacy Hammond. I'm here to give a public comment during public comment.
Thank you.
It's Stacy, what, what's your last name?
Uh, my last name is Hammond, H A M M O N D. I will say my name and my address during public comment.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate you being here. Um, and then Rhonda Holden. Let's see, who else am I missing?
I'm here.
And Rhonda.
This is Rhonda.
Hi, Rhonda.
Carrie Barr.
I see Carrie.
And I think we have Jeff Yamada in the admin conference room.
Yep.
And Ron.
And Ron.
Earl Lacker.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. If I miss anyone, I apologize, but thanks for being here. Uh, let's see, oh, we're doing the, the budget meeting first, right?
Correct, public hearing for the levy.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have, um, you've got a resolution twenty dash oh five and twenty dash oh six, which is a, and a exhibit A, which is the executive budget. We need to submit to be eligible for about ninety three hundred dollars in levy dollars. And, um, there's a time, time sensitive to this, so we have to ha- have this submitted by, uh, November fifteenth and then.
By when?
Well, excuse me, November fifteenth, November fifteenth.
Uh, and, and just, it was noted earlier, the date is incorrect on this resolution. It has, this meeting being the twenty fourth, and today is actually the twenty second.
Okay, thank you. It should be the twenty second. Thank you. Is that the one?
Okay, so can we have approval for the resolution number twenty dash zero five, adoption of twenty, twenty one budget?
I would move to approve.
Okay.
Um, motion by John and second by Erica, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Um, approval, so some discussion on the property tax levy, approval of resolution number twenty dash zero six. Scott, do you have any input on that?
Just, this is the, uh, the district is eligible to receive, as I mentioned, about ninety three hundred dollars in, uh, levy support from the district. And this is a resolution to do that, to be submitted to the county. We, uh, the, uh, the rate of property tax increase was very low this year, so we're all, like, the increase was point oh, point oh, six oh two percent.
And typically, we could be up to one percent, but it's also limited by the.
Correct.
Inflation, and this is the limiting factor here.
This is the limiting factor. So, yeah, on, if the inflation rate is higher, yeah, it would be up to one percent, but it's a little.
Another twenty two dollars problem.
Yeah, so the, the, the only, the increase is gonna be fifty five dollars and eighty seven cents.
Yes.
Okay, so that would buy everybody.
Well, I move to approve this resolution.
Second it. So we have a motion by Matt, second by Terry, to approve resolution number twenty dash zero six, authorization of twenty twenty one regular property tax levy. Um, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
Thank you.
Um, anything else, Scott, as far as budget hearing?
No.
Okay, so we.
And that all one twenty. Yeah, and they don't buy any pieces of that.
Again, just to reiterate, our levy amount for twenty twenty one will be nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars and four cents.
Total.
Total. Total, twelve months, thirty five days. Um, if there's nothing else to talk about, we'll adjourn budget hearing and call the regular meeting to order of hospital, uh, public hospital, District Number One, of Kid Health Academy. Um, first, we have approval of agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, adjust the agenda. I'd like to add, uh, six D, section three, under finance, have a capital equipment discussion and possibly an approval of something that was introduced after the finance meeting.
So six D, number three.
Yeah, add a three.
Add a three, okay. Um, anything else?
Sixty or five?
Six D is in David, section, and we'd add a section three.
Aye, aye, aye.
Oh, my agenda's different, Mr. That's fine, okay, so thank you. Is that, I might go second again, so that way I'm on the same page, literally, as you guys.
And move to approve the revised agenda.
Motion by Matt to approve agenda, second by Terry.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Um, we have consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Um, John, move to approve consent agenda, second.
Aye, second it.
Second by Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, thank you. And then we have, uh, presentations. Earl Lacker.
So, Ron, were you intending to come here to do the presentation, or join us from the admin conference room?
Um, I was intending to come in there.
I can step out.
Okay, why don't you come on down and, and we will throw Scott out on his ear, so that we don't violate the ten member rule.
Scott, you gotta come back.
I have the leave, the keys, and the credit card.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it. So, this is the presentation, we delayed it a couple times. Every year, we do a risk assessment of the facilities in the department, and then we've been paying, paying special attention the last several months to workplace violence. And so this is gonna be a combination of Ron talking about the assessment and mitigation that we've done and that we're planning, and then Mandy Olsen, um, will assist with the discussion about workplace violence.
Okay, so, to navigate around it.
Okay, um, so, this is our assessment, we updated it this year to add some more. Um, we had sixty five different areas that, that included all the different buildings that were in, and inside and out, and then, and those buildings like the hospital were very separate, all these different. And the other thing we did was, um, we basically just divided all the areas into, gave responsibility to all the different people in S L T to take the areas of their responsibility, and then they would get with those managers and managers to assess it. And so it really made it more robust and collaborative. And then, um, we added this Verge data, which, it was just kinda nice to see it alongside the assessment, so you can see two together and, and see if that's kind of a lining up. Or if, you know, there's Verge data there that would really indicate the numbers should be higher. And then, over here, we have, uh, the, the engineering controls, and so we just marked in there what engineering controls we have into these areas, and then if there was some discrepancies, or non discrepancies, some areas improvement, we would note it in there. And, so, the colors here, one, here's the assessment in here, all these different colors. And so one is virtually no risk, two is minimal risk, three is moderate risk, four is high risk, and then five was severe high risk with history. And so, so, um, so, yeah, it was all the buildings, I'm not gonna go through all of that, 'cause we got it summarized, summarized in another table. Okay, so first level summary, um, so like I said, there are sixty five different locations that we assessed, and, um, these are, um, locations, the number of locations that, um, had scoring of a three or higher. So, under assault violence, there was eighteen locations with the three, and then theft vandalism had nine locations assessed to the three, infant peace was just one, and then cash collection had four, and other, um, was three, for value of three. So, and that also was added this year, just to capture, um, engineering controls that may be special, or if there was, you know, a risk that this really didn't fall in one of these categories, so capture that. And then, so, most of the, most of the locations fell into that three category, and for high risk, there was two for assault, and two locations for theft and vandalism, and then one for cash collection. And then for severe high risk, there was just one location for assault violence, um, and that was, and then infant peace security, and that was in family burping place, so those had a value of five. And then this is just the total locations valued greater through severe.
Because there were some locations that were even less than three, right?
Oh, yeah, majority were less than three.
Yeah. So these, it's just a summary of the engineering controls that deploy throughout the, the buildings, and so I thought it was kinda nice just to see it all in one table, um, kinda what they're used for, so. And then this is the occurrence data, and, um, this is the number of locations that experienced workplace violence, and this is twenty nineteen, and then we also did twenty twenty to date. And so, there was thirteen locations in twenty nineteen, and then there's already been fifteen in twenty twenty, so.
Yeah, he's trying to call in again. Did you hit that?
Number, okay, then we kinda broke that out into three different types of workplace violence, and so you have, um, these are the number of events now, and so this is patient visitor to patient visitor, that was zero in, in both years, so that's.
Kinda who was the assailant, I guess, I'm a bit.
Yes.
So, there was no patient on patient, or was there?
And, um, patient visitor to employee, there was twenty five in twenty nineteen, and then thirty four in twenty twenty five. And then, um, employee to employee events, we had seven in nineteen, and then fourteen in twenty twenty, so. Isn't it true?
Julia, I think I asked you about this, um, your explanation, even though we can't, even though there's no one explanation for all these things, they're individual events, but, uh, you're thinking that a lot of this has to do with frustrations around, uh, in just, uh, the pandemic, but also, uh, kinda restrictions that we have at the hospital?
Yeah, um, and, and Mandy actually goes through each one of the, um, events that occur, but, um, we've, over the course of twenty twenty, just really seen tensions in the community escalate, and, um, when we talk about employee on employee, um, workplace violence, that includes verbal.
Yes, actually, all of these could be verbal or physical.
Like threats.
Or both, right, right. And it's the OSHA definition, so it's the threat or actual, but as defined by the victim. So if the victim says, this was workplace violence, I felt harassed or threatened or bullied or, then, then that meets the definition, and that's just what you, but, um, just to your point about, I wouldn't say it's that maybe always consciously related to COVID. I think it's more that the stress of what's going on with the pandemic has, um, shortened everyone's views. So you see more behavior issues than we do in the past, because, I mean, there's this neurological thing that's going on with people when they have increased cortisol, that they have a harder time with judgment, impulse control, so all of, like, bad behaviors we might previously experienced, they're just amplified. Absolutely. So, I, I think that's what's formed out, there are a few that are directly related to, where the patient says, I'm not gonna wear a mask, this is, and that's what they're mad about, is really COVID things, um, but that's not, the majority of them aren't necessarily that, where it's a mental health patient with.
And, and shouting about not being able to be in the emergency department with someone, or that sort of upset.
But they're not all that, they're all at where it's, it's some other issue.
Generalized stress.
Yeah, I, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Women, the fraud.
And definitions are the same, no criteria changes from nineteen to twenty.
No. Actually, this is, I, I went back through all, every single event from nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, just recently, went through every single one, so we're making sure we're, um, looking at them the same way.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mataro.
Somebody wants in?
Oh, somebody wants in.
Okay, so, this is the, the property, um, events that we had, so there was ten in each of nineteen and twenty, and. Oh, sorry, it was a number of locations, ten in each of those, and then the number of events was seventeen, twenty nineteen, fifteen.
And you said that was vandalism, theft, that sort of?
Yeah.
Occurrence, okay.
Or, um, a loss of patient lunging would fit in that category too.
Oh, okay.
Um, people worrying about something happening, but, I don't know, there's, somebody wandering that they're worried about could be a suspicion.
The infant peace crunches, there was zero. Okay, um, it's, I have the data, so this is a, a summary of, um, the events by location, so you can see them all in one shot there. CCU, um, emergency department, kind of the places that were assessed, you know, three or greater, is pretty much where that data is.
Right, so these are the incident, workplace violence incident side. So that doesn't include verbal and, um, physical, and, you know, not surprisingly, the ER is the highest.
You surprised up there with ear noses and throat being so new, that they're already three?
So there's, we had an incident in the MAC, and, um, did all three twenty fit counted in that? So that would be boiled down to one.
This is a side report by incident, so sometimes we do, and that was one of the reasons we, we might just get this entire look back, so you might have three employees report on the same event.
Make sure.
If there were separate injuries, like, we have had a single patient where there were three separate incidents, and different injuries there, so those were counted three times. If it's the same event, same injury, and it was reported three times, that was counted once.
Makes sense.
How does it shake out for verbal or is it physical?
Uh.
Approximately?
There are far more, uh, verbal than physical, but there are quite a few. We got, um, it brought up now, also, we can break it out by what, what was the harm, so was there no contact, and so, you know, no physical contact, or there was physical contact, and there was no harm, um, or minor harm, which, uh, per W S N A's categories they use would be a bruise or an abrasion, um, contusion, sprain, uh, and then major would be, you know, stitches, broken bones, um, so there's.
Okay.
And we've had various levels of security this year, is there any reduction when the security officer is on the premises, or no correlation?
The last time we looked at that, which we don't have a ton of data, because it hasn't been very long, but no, there wasn't, there wasn't anything that matched as far as the hours of day, or the, um, but that's a good segue into, um, the plan, or what we've done so far, we're.
Yeah. So, this is the plans of improvement, and so.
Is it, is it possible to make that a little larger? I feel like I'm on a constant eye test right now.
Yeah, I can't, I can, I need a keyboard and a mouse to do.
Thank you very much.
Because my optometrist is taking care of me.
We can help him.
You have a good one.
Of course, we had a PRK twenty years ago.
Okay, so here's the improvements we did in twenty nineteen, based off the previous
estimates, based off, I think, they reported to the safety committee, um, various Verge reports. And so, we installed cameras in the medication rooms, and that was something that was over general television, all cameras and materials management, on, or, to gift shops, they had requested some in there. Uh, we added an intrusion alarm for the unoccupied side of Radio Hill, so when they did the T I, that building is basically half and half, and so the occupied side had more, unoccupied did not, and, uh, it was really more of a concern for staff working late, because you can, multiple doors, you could get into the unoccupied side, and you would never know it, um, when you were there, so it's kind of a risk for them. And additionally, we, um, were using that occupied side for storage, and some of that information is sensitive, so we're not protecting that. And then additionally, um, that we upgraded the system so that, um, it allows us, it in, unique codes to everybody, so, um, as, if somebody leaves, then you just simply delete that code, and you don't affect anybody else, and it becomes way easier to manage. And, um, it also allows us to do that remotely, so facilities can take that on. And the other thing it does for you is, like, in the case of Radio Hill, they have a conference room that gets used on weekends and nights sometimes, and it allows us to remotely set a schedule so that the building gets armed, and it doesn't fall on anybody to do that. And so, you can set those one-time on schedules. Uh, so we did that. And, um, then this is really just more site that we did the same thing to, so we've got this now in internal medicine, family medicine, and O T and speech. Um, at Radio Hill, again, we added parking lot lights to the east side of the building, and there's virtually nothing out there, that is better now. The west side of the building also has parking, and it has some lighting, but I'm still working on getting the city to replace two existing lights there to make that better, that's proven. Um, so we installed cameras in the medical arts building, that all went in on the T I project, so the cameras are inside and out, and, um, installed electronic access in medical arts building, uh, so the badge access, and again, it's, it's like the alarm system, where if somebody leaves, you just delete the badge, and, you know, your risk is gone. And so, that's, that's proven to be a really good system, and that's the improvement. And it, it adds other features too, where you are able to, uh, because some of these badges go out to contractors also, and cleaning staff, and so every time somebody bashes into a door, puts a timestamp and a name on it, so you can go back and see who was where we had, so that's a help. Um, we installed panic system, and, and it's got a mass notification system to it, so panics in the clinics has pretty much been a standard for K V H for, for a long time, but this particular system goes beyond just notifying the police, it will notify through a pop-up on every P C in the building, and anywhere that's on the K V H intranet, so it can, and it also goes to S L T, and then it can send text messages and emails too, so, that can be helpful, like, if you have a code silver for, like, an active shooter, and, um, you know, that can prevent people from going into a bad situation.
Who has the authority to initiate that sort of message?
The, um, you can, if you had admin rights, you can do a custom message and send it out, and you select your audience, so like, Peds is an audience, and family medicine's an audience, and rapid access is an audience, and F T is an audience, and so you can select who you want, just check, 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 and then send it out there. Or it can be by a, a button, or multiple buttons, that, um, when that button is pressed, it sends out this message, and so.
Do you ever run any tests?
Monthly.
People might have seen these warnings before, and they're acclimated as to what they might mean.
And now he knows to warn us before he runs.
So, and it, would it be you that would be doing, who would be doing that? The facilities department does those tests, yeah, who's ever on, yeah, so we go there and we hit every single button in there, and then, um, document it. Not only that, this system sends me weekly reports of every one of those panic devices, and it, it does a self-check on it, and it tells you whether the battery's good or not, and, um, whether it's in range. If somebody leaves with one, 'cause some of them are mobile, they'll tell you it's out of range. If somebody leaves with one, because some of them are mobile, they'll tell you it's out of range. So it's kind of nice.
Let me just report you expanded to the medical arts, all the panic buttons were once by facility department.
Yes.
For as long as we've had them.
Yeah, we did check the other ones too.
You noted several video cameras. Who monitors that? Where does the image go?
Yeah, it goes to a server. And so that data is stored for like thirty days plus. And so it used to be a lot longer, but as we've added cameras, that time is shorter. So we're thirty days plus.
Is the server onsite or is it a cloud-based server?
It's onsite.
On site, okay. And so no one reviews it real time? It's just there, if there's a situation, you go back and look at it, is that?
Actively, no. It's, there is two screens in the facilities office where all of my staff have workstations. And so it's, it's always up. And they are pretty darn good about checking it when they're in there and.
So there's two, but there's more than one camera on each screen? Like you have a, you know, a grid pattern sort of thing of all the different cameras or it rotates through?
One, one has, you can set it up however you want, but one has a grid that pretty much shows them all. And then the other one flashes through in a bigger screen.
Just rotates through and?
Yeah.
And all the cameras on this, on my KVH code to your facility that you're talking about there?
All of them, yeah, you bet. And there's hardly a week goes by that somebody isn't wanting, you know, a section of that footage for something that's happened. It's been a valuable tool.
And a month is how many terabytes of footage?
Tell you.
Hard drives got so cheap, you don't feel any need to keep it longer than thirty days? No certain situations arise?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that. I would like to have more than thirty days, but it's just something that's, you know, we started off with a lot more days. And as we've added, we're, that's kind of where we found ourselves at, but. And in order to.
Size of images stored?
Pardon?
What size, like a ten eighty p, a seven twenty p, a four eighty, less than that? What, what size do you attempt to store?
Well, it's based on the camera. So some cameras have more pixels than others. And so it will store whatever that camera will give out.
Okay.
And, but we can probably assess that pretty quick here because we're up against a limit on the number of licenses. And so you buy them in lots. And I'm going to see if we have hundred and twenty-five, well, we're right up at that.
For, for video feeds, a hundred and twenty-five?
Yep, so we're going to have to do something there. And so that may be the time to either go to cloud-based or, you know, add more memory.
What's the oldest camera?
None of them are very old. I think this project went in in twenty seventeen?
Seventeen.
Okay, so they're all pretty good cameras, so there's nothing, no, two type cameras or?
No, they, they've all got really good. The fisheye ones are kind of funky, but.
And when somebody makes a request to look at this footage, what's the most common reason? Is it some situational thing or what are they trying to identify when they're requesting footage?
Boy, that is, that is.
I'd say best from what I see, we will have, or a lot, a patient will say, you lost my five hundred dollar ring. And often we can go in and see, sometimes honestly, see whether they came in with it on or not. That's happened where people are coming in confused and they say, you lost this. Or we can even watch, what was the belongings bag on the bottom of the stretcher when they went down to med surg or not? You know, some, some, that's where I, in my department, we, Linda Navarre is frequently asking them for, can we go back and look at footage?
Yeah, but there are instances of workplace violence, that it really allows you to see what happened. And, and there's, oh, sorry. There's times when the police attacks for.
Well, again, I would encourage us to keep more than thirty days based on what you're describing. It's again, so cheap now for hard drive space.
I think, I can only think of one instance though where we were like, oh, we don't have it anymore. That I know of from our department for risk management where we said, gosh, we need that. And it was so far out that we didn't have it. Otherwise they're pretty timely. When COVID first started, I spent a lot of time looking at the cameras for some contact tracing on one particular case. And that, it was actually really helpful because I could see a lot of what happened in that incident.
And I would assume our system is not doing any facial recognition. You're not keeping track of who's.
That's we spend a lot of time learning our faces.
You know, I agree with John. It would be nice, I think, more than this thirty days. We could keep a little bit longer. You know, just as we move forward. Especially we have a lot more areas in the organization and we've added the cameras. It's just kind of a proactive thing.
So Scott and Jeff are in the admin conference room together. So between the two of them, we'll make sure they get a budgeted for twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, okay, good. How long do you think we should keep them, John?
I would think like ninety days or so. I mean, again, it just depends on if this proprietary servers, what compression you're using for the video. Because now with the new codecs, the video is the same quality, but half the density. So your drive suddenly feels twice as large. And again, another ten terabytes, less than a thousand bucks for standard drives if you're not using encrypted drives and other things. So I just don't think it's very expensive, just that, just that, just in case where somebody comes later and potentially, you know, if the hospital has any potential liability, it seems like a really small investment to just give us some extra time to handle some video.
So basically ninety days, quarter of what?
Yeah, I'm open to ideas, but thirty just seems really short unless it's.
Yeah, that's minimal.
Yeah, I think ninety days would be fairly doable and not that expensive.
That's good.
Thanks, Jeff.
Evade training, so we've done some training that's for de-escalation tactics and physical defense tactics. So that has happened in nineteen and continued on in twenty twenty. Amanda, is she out there?
Yes, I am. Hello. Would you like me to talk about that? Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, I just wanted to mention that we are increasing our, our training through the program called Evade. We get great feedback from our staff on it. It's actually happening right now and there's a different levels that they can participate. And it really focuses on verbal de-escalation, physical positioning with angry or escalated people. And then the level two is more of a physical restraint and safety course. And so they've been wonderful partners. After the training, the last training, they came in June. I actually got thank you notes from employees, which was great. I've never seen that before for a training like that. So we're looking to increase that and have them here quarterly next year and actually assign new hires, the training, so that they, they get automatically enrolled. And then of course, we've also talked about expanding it to our volunteers, but putting our employees first. So it's a, it's been a great program and they also help us with policy assessment and job-specific education and regulatory guidance as well.
Thanks, Amanda.
You're welcome.
Enhance the security assessment. So I already done over some of those things we've done with that. And we added ENT because they were not part of that original TI. So they're now on that mass notification pendant systems. All in line with those notifications. And then down here are the plans for rest of this year and twenty twenty-one. And so one of the things we want to do is get that electronic access control into the hospital. Gives you a lot, increases that security really about tenfold. If one of, some of the key things on that are ready. So just to say, the medical arts is kind of a testbed for that, for this particular system. And we selected it because it was a system that was inexpensive to employ on internal doors. And so that's last hospitalized that they had a beautiful system, but they just didn't deploy it because it was so expensive. And so anyhow, it's proven to be really solid, so. We'll move that into the. And then Amanda kind of already talked about the additional training that she's doing. Added some security personnel and so. So it was kind of the trigger that kicked us over the edge there to, to give that a try. And so we're pretty happy with that and they kind of continue to evaluate how we use them and where to use them.
What's with the current, and somebody wants to answer.
Yeah, because you're.
What's your, what's the current schedule of security?
It's twenty-four hours a day now.
It is twenty, so, seven days a week?
Yes.
And is it, is it one individual?
It's one individual.
And do they just roam the facility or are they in a vehicle or are they on?
They're not in a vehicle, they're, they're on foot. They do have some checkpoints throughout the hospital, but they mostly hang out close to ED. There's a little security desk that we put in the waiting room. And so it.
And they're not going over the MAC or anything like that, they're just on this campus?
Just on this campus, yes. And so with their desk being there, I mean, it puts them close to the high, high-risk area, so.
Do you find that their presence near the ED, just, I mean, do you get a sense it just helps even if they're not actually interacting? Was just knowing they're there that some people maybe?
Yeah, a meeting with DeeDee, our ED manager, the other day, and she was saying that, that it seems to do that.
Yeah.
And so we're working on now basically being able to do handoffs from shift to shift and basically let them know what's going on in the hospital so that it's an active handoff. Here's what's going on, you know, in room four, we've got somebody that's, you know, illness or whatever. You know, so that they're aware of what's going on. And so we're kind of improving on that.
And what authority does this individual have? If something happens, what are their limits?
The limits are the, I believe it was set up, they'll do whatever they're asked. So.
They are not armed.
They do not possess a firearm? We don't, do they have arrest powers? Or are they citizens?
They do not have arrest.
Yeah, we, we contact, right? We're just, we're not, for.
So the situation has been, then our regional law enforcement will be called in if it was that serious?
Yeah, our staff.
Oh, absolutely.
If things continue to.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody, it's very, very possible.
Very, yeah.
But they, they can help out in code degrees and they can help watch people and, yeah.
Ron, I have a question about this next one. Interesting, I'm glad to see it's slated for upgrades. How do you test it? Do you have a simulated baby and somebody tries to smuggle it out and see if they can get out?
We have done that.
We have done that, yeah.
That's neat.
We have those code amber tells.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's.
But we tested that monthly also. And so, and that's how we know that it's not reliable. It's just some tags won't work and.
Are there?
Been an array of problems that we've, that we've had.
Have like a bracelet or something that goes on that would set off an alarm if they left the space, is that?
Exactly, yeah.
Some of our rooms are actually too close to the sensors, so.
There was an incident several years ago where someone, it was the alert staff that caught someone trying to take the kid out. That shouldn't happen.
Where was that at?
Here.
Oh.
Volunteer staff.
Volunteer staff, yeah.
Thought and.
Yeah.
Wow.
Oh, that's scary.
That's a safe catch right there.
So I'm in pursuit of finding some tried and true systems out there. But then we have some electronic button pads that are earth route. And they're kind of the same problem as a key and that it's actually worse than a key. So you have a code and everybody knows the code. But if you have somebody that leaves that you really don't want to have the access to that area anymore, then you have to change the code and then you have to let everybody know. It becomes this huge workflow issue. So essentially what happens is the codes don't get changed and it's pretty much useless. So that would just get changed, the badge access and it'll fix that, so.
Then badges would indicate who's coming and going, not just that someone is coming and going, right?
Yeah, exactly. And then there's additional things you can do with those badges. It's like, you know, my badge is active from eight to five PM and beyond that, it's, it's not. So identify some other areas that we would like to have some cameras, some materials management, respiratory care, corridor and labs. So that corridor borders both of those. And so MRI does not have any, nor does the three oh one or three oh nine. Through that.
How do you get the camera signals back to your office area or is it wireless or wired?
It's wired, yeah, but it just becomes a IP address.
Okay, so it's over Ethernet then?
Yes, it is.
Hey Ron, this is really interesting. Can we take a break because we're a little bit late on public comment? Yes, and then we'll come back to you because I, I think it is interesting to the board for, so. We have at least one person, Stacy Hammond, had a comment. And do we have any, Stacy, are you with us?
Oh, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Stacy, yeah. Yeah, so we're, we're going to take a break and if you want to do public comment, we usually limit it to three minutes and then the board doesn't typically respond. So please feel free to say your public comment.
Do you want me to go now or are you staying or after your break?
Ma'am, yeah, go ahead, right, yeah.
Okay, hi, my name is Stacy Hammond, yes, and I live at three zero eight North Sampson Street here in Ellensburg. And it's interesting that I find it interesting that you guys are talking about, you know, danger and violence tonight because that's exactly why I am calling in. So I had my, my life, you know, my safety threatened to have, by a group of women to come and beat me with baseball bats, show up with a busload of people and beat me down, slap me down. They called my children, I have nine children, including two severely disabled sons, called my children germs and spawn. You know, just a really difficult and challenging time here locally. And I, you know, come to find out, one of those people that were participating in that was Rhonda Holden, who's on this meeting right now. And Officer Tim Weed took the case, which I didn't know at the time. His wife also is on this meeting right now, Mandy Weed, and he didn't find any wrongdoing. It's interesting. I have a recorded conversation of Tim Weed threatening that if I didn't drop the case, he would arrest me. You know, I'm not getting anywhere legally, but I'm going to continue to push. If I have to go all the way, obviously, to federal levels, I will. It's disparaging to me to listen to this meeting and you guys talk so much about, you know, how to keep your workplace safe and keep people safe when the very people sitting in those chairs want to beat me. Okay? And think my kids are disgusting germs, right? What, to be eradicated right now to call a child germs? I see that as a threat considering what we're dealing with. And I am just sick. And they told, also stated, and this is all in writing, all of it, in public writing, hundreds of pages. And I also will say that they also said in public that they knew, quote, knew where I lived and they were coming. And I lived, I, I always was shocked who these, I didn't even know who these people were, how would they know where I live? And I just, for the record, I live directly across the street from Mr. Altman, who's also on this board. I would assume that he did not, you know, that they don't just sit around and talk about where I live or whatever their anger is that they want to harm me, okay? But the bottom line is this is so disgusting. And the way this community works sometimes is just terrifying. And I obviously will continue to follow up. There's been a lot of problems with this hospital. I find it to be unprofessional quite often, but I've never seen it to this level. And I will never, ever cease. but I've never seen it to this level, and I will never, ever cease, until people are held accountable for this kind of conduct. You do not deserve even to be free, much less have community jobs when you, when you treat people like this. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, sorry you had that experience, but appreciate your comment. Um, do we have another?
Five oh nine, eight five six, five zero one zero. This number, I don't know who that is. Are you there, five oh nine, eight five six, fifty ten? It looks like you're muted.
Okay, not hearing any other comments, uh, thank you for that opportunity, and we'll turn the time back over to Ron, to initiate our conversation on risk assessment.
Okay, so, we're gonna add some light into the breeze away, the Mediplex. Four liters, and that goes out to chestnuts that way, not that they have any light in it. Add a tree that's, that's already taken care of, that is overgrown over the light, and, um. Add cameras to three one, three oh nine, I guess that's the duplicate there. Um, add your radio hill to finish off that security, there's some old fire doors that separate the occupied side from the unoccupied side, the longer need those fire doors, and we can lock them now, so we'll look into that. So, over to Medical Arts Building, on that access control, it automatically locks the main entry, and the elevator that goes up to FME, but anyhow, we'll create some regular checks, so that we can verify that that's actually happening. Otherwise, you're almost too good for night. And then we're gonna do some annual badge audits, to catch people that have not been, someone gone, and keep that up to date. And then we're gonna change the badge policy, sometimes you get requests for special permissions. We basically built a standard, so that by role, it allows you to have access to these doors during these times, and if they're a special request, then it forces you to go through the director and through the safety officer. And we have some badges that we use for contractors, and so now numbered those, and then there's a tracking sheet that we've enhanced, so that we know who's checked it out, what number it is, how long they're gonna have it, and so it's much easier to follow, without the numbers, you can really be held out there. Those are the simple things. And we're gonna get those locked up. And I talked about the key and badge checkout sheet, so that's already done. And then, we've already formalized who's gonna follow up on going through that checkout sheet, and just make sure to return. When we originally set up in Medical Arts, we did not enable the ability to track who was entering what door and at what time, so we reprogrammed that, reissued cards, and so now it is part of this card, and so. And then the last is, it's, it had a lock to Foundation House, it's in staff development, so there's several people that can come and go there, but they have some sensitive data in there, and so we got a lock to that. That is it. Anybody have any further questions or comments?
Some questions to do.
Yeah.
So the, the list you showed us, is this all to do, or are some of those completed items also?
Some of those are completed, the first list was all completed.
Okay, and thirty-some years ago, my first career, I was, uh, working for the State Department in countermeasures, and embassy security was one of the things I oversee. So I would really encourage everything we can do for access control, especially since the technology's gotten so good. But I, I gladly put some money behind stronger access, makes everyone feel safer, you know where people are, you know when they leave, they know where to get in.
To manage.
Like that, so, so that would just be my two cents, it's great to see what you're doing, and all the evaluations, but I, I really support anything you can do to strengthen access control.
All right, very good.
And then, so, we've had a thirty percent increase this year, um, we still have two and a half months left, so it's gonna be like forty, fifty percent increase. Um, some of it is, how many of those do you think as family members can't be in with family members, so they get upset, versus?
I would say that less than a tenth of it.
Okay.
I, like a handful of the cases.
So these are?
Um, actually, those incidents, I think there's two. Um, it was actually, there's more about mask wearing than the visitor. I can, I can get you the exact numbers, I just don't know them off the top of my head.
Yeah, I mean, it is concerning, I appreciate John's comments, because that's a big increase, I know there's a lot of anxiety out there, but still, that's.
The majority that we're seeing is those that are physical, have to do with people who are, um. It, it's not COVID or KVH that they're angry at, they're struggling in here for mental health reasons, and they don't wanna be detained, is another reason, maybe by law enforcement. Um, those are what we're seeing, where they are already detained by law enforcement. They're having to be medically evaluated in the emergency room.
Yeah, this is really interesting, any other comments?
Thanks, Ron, really appreciate it, very interesting. They also did this presentation, or version of this, at QR Com, it was good for us, you know, thanks, Ron.
So, and we had also.
Didn't stop back.
Okay.
Didn't they complete, end of last year, a risk assessment for technology risk assessment?
And we do that every year also.
Okay.
And that just, you know, both of these, all we, we sit and sort of do the assessment once a year. This is obviously ongoing work, and, and they're doing it all year long.
Yeah.
Um, particularly with controlled access, um, we purchased a system that was scalable, and again, we wanted to work the budget out at the Medical Arts, and I absolutely agree, we, we have physical keys and thousands of them out there, so, um, this is definitely something that will help everybody feel.
Yeah, I think it's good to have the, like, have a report on this every year.
Okay.
And then even like, even the technology risk assessment to see.
And then, and tying into that, taking his list and putting the timeframe on some of those goals, something we can check in a year from now, which ones did we achieve, which ones didn't? And if we didn't, why didn't we have to help facilitate, is it funding, is it something else, what do you mean? That's just my two cents, and we got four other voices here.
Yeah, I. See, reports and dashboards, we'll start with quality with Mandy Olson.
Yeah, so, you have my report in your packet, I did want to. Um, I did want to talk a little bit about what we're seeing internally from employee health as far as cases and exposure reviews, um, you've been tracking this in my department for a while, and I just thought. I'll share this, um. I just thought I'd share this with you, so, um, from the beginning, and I've, I've mentioned this in previous reports, every time there's a positive case, we look back through the record, every, every positive patient, and see what employees took care of that patient, and assess their risk of exposure, um, and if we need to, we contact the employees to assess their risk, and see if they, they need testing, if they need to be excluded, how they're doing. Um, so, these are those, those touches, so there are multiple, like, some of our employees who work at the COVID clinic, get very frequent communication with us, because they're in contact with majority of the positives. Um, so you can see in July, we had a ton of these reviews, that was five hundred and fifty-two in July.
That corresponds to the outbreaks and long-term fear.
And we also saw other incidents in the community, or outbreaks in other settings too, and so, um, they were coming in other ways as well. Um, we're seeing an increase, again, and it feels more than this, but that's where we're at for October. And part of the reason it feels more is, um, so this graph shows the number of our employees who have been tested, with the, the blue line, the orange is those of our employees that were negative when tested, this little gray one is positive employees, um, and then this yellow line represents the number of employees who've been excluded from work related to COVID. So, you can see here in July, um, and I'm sorry, I haven't been able to see her, but, uh, we had about three employees positive in July, and ten people excluded, and we're already there in October, and it's not over yet.
So excluding meaning they were possibly exposed, but don't have any symptoms, and didn't test positive, but you're.
It could be for either reason.
You're keeping them away from the facility until a certain time period is passed?
Right, it could be because they're positive, but you have, you have that number there, so the, the rest of them, of those ten, seven, were excluded because they were exposed.
And are they then also included in the numbers tested, that, that's so?
Not necessarily, not everyone's been exposed yet, they're just tested.
So can I just say, um, this week, um, over the weekend, we had a lot of this type of activity we had, and this is not happening in this hospital, this is, the reason we're seeing this increase is because there's more COVID in the community. So these are folks who are close contact with a relative, or they, they went to a wedding or something, and somebody turned up positive. Um, one of the things our partnership with public health has allowed us to do is quality and infection control are actually doing these case in contact for everybody in the KVH bubble. Um, so to date, I think this, their, their investigations total about fifteen hundred. So that means that fifteen hundred case in contact investigations that Mandy and her crew have done, so the public health can focus on the general public, on CWU, on schools as they went back. And one of the statistics that I think is just really telling, is that in Kitas County, we contact ninety-eight percent of the positives within forty-eight hours. And we've been able to do that because of this partnership, state, the state average is around fifty percent.
And actually, that's, what Mark said, what I heard Mark say earlier, was that we're contacting a hundred percent of the positives within twenty-four hours, and ninety-eight percent of the contacts.
Within, okay.
Which is phenomenal.
So we are really, again, our safety officers doubled and tripled as our quality and infection control people, but this partnership has really, really served the community well. But we're feeling, by we, I mean Mandy and her crew and Anna, are feeling the pressure as the, the disease really does sort of escalate the community.
How concerned are we about how exclusions, especially since we're not all the way through October yet, and you expect that to? I mean, it's reasonably plausible that that's going to rise before the end of the month. How do we expect that to affect staffing, and is that a, a creeping concern at this moment?
So, um, we've been in communication and with our department directors, and to that point, we are doing some contingency planning, talking again about staffing up every place we possibly can. But Carrie is working on a contingency plan for our clinics that would combine either sort of vertically or horizontally some of the services in our clinics, anticipating that, you know, we may have three or four PSRs go out, and how do we continue to see patients, um, so we're working on some things like that. Um, we're also really kind of, and walking around observing and policing, reminding people that there is no work bubble. And I, I think that's something that we have to really stay vigilant, we really have to stay disciplined about that. So, um, you know, our, we have cafeteria tables that are about this wide, you don't get to sit down with your coworker and eat, or you become a close contact if one of those folks pops positive. So just really sort of amping up the vigilance, um, our managers need to manage this, um, if people carpool, gotta be wearing masks. Um, of course, we have a lot of folks that are married, are family members, um, and that has its own sort of challenges. But this is us as an employer, this is what every employer out there is dealing with, and really is sort of divorced from us as healthcare delivery persons, but this has been the topic of the week, pretty much.
And I think we actually, being healthcare, have an advantage, because healthcare typically does have employee health components. So, in fact, we're, we're somewhat advantaged, and we're kind of poised to manage this, where other businesses don't, don't have their own kind of employee health system. But, so, it's nice we have these numbers, because that did kind of alert us, like, gosh, it feels like we're on the edge of this, what can we do to mitigate, to prevent any staffing issues, and, and really feel like we're, we're ahead of it?
And, and the, the middle tension on that is, yes, we're an employer, but we're the only employer in the county that is actively inviting COVID into the facility. And we have to protect our staff, partly because they're our staff, and partly so we can continue to work with that.
So senior leaders were assigned to go out and meet with each one of their directors, uh, again, do some observation, and really kind of just cast a line around masking, distancing, all those things we should be doing.
So I don't, I don't doubt what you said earlier, you explained to me how you know that they didn't get here. I'm not sure, is it that they're associated with some cluster somewhere?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you my version of it, and then you'll get the corrected version. Um, someone, you know, so somebody who works here will get a, went to a party or went to a wedding over the weekend, and they get a call from their uncle who says, hey, your aunt was positive, and so that person contacted Mandy and said, hey, I, I, you know, went to this party, I ate dinner with my aunt, and it turns out she's positive. So they go through this quiz, that, that determines that in fact, they were in their presence for the amount of time, they were not just, and people were not wearing masks, they just became a close contact of a positive. Now you start saying, tell me about who you've been with at work, tell me about the break room, or. Do you wanna correct my?
You did an excellent job, but yeah, I mean, we use CDC guidelines to look at, so either they're positive, right? They weren't feeling well, they call us, they say, gosh, I'm not feeling well, we say, you should go get tested. And then they go get tested, and we find out they're positive, they get excluded based on their guidelines, and we follow the same criteria that the Health Department does, as far as looking for potential exposures within the workplace, um, and that's all CDC guidelines. If someone says, my, my kiddo is positive, um, so, okay, so we say, when, when were they positive? Let's look back a few days, did you work? Um, we help the department make sure that things get cleaned, um, and interview staff to, to make sure that kind of matches, matches too, right, like, um, when you are in contact with them, or what that kind of contact was. Um, and then, based on CDC guidelines, again, it's, okay, well, you were symptomatic at the state, or you're not symptomatic, or you tested, so here's your isolation, or here's your quarantine period. We, it is hard to know sometimes what, where the exposure is, in most of the cases, it's been pretty straightforward, where you, you really can trace it from, there's a known positive somewhere in there. We, and are fortunate too, that it, it hasn't been from healthcare, it has not been from work, there's one case that we think is.
Yeah, and I would just suggest, it would be pretty extraordinary, at this point in this adventure, to find one of our healthcare workers in an exam room completely unmasked and exposed with a. I mean, there is an awareness when you're dealing with patients, what my concern is, is when we let our guard down in break rooms, and, you know, in private workspaces, and, and things like that, so.
And I could tell you from all the reviews we've done. And I can tell you from all the reviews we've done, our staff are really doing an incredible job with their P P E and what they're doing. They, I mean, besides we observe it, and you look at how many tests we've done at the COVID clinic, how many positive tests have come out of there, and not a single one of our employees there is positive.
That's amazing.
It is amazing. They're doing an incredible job. And we have our own secret shoppers, too, because there's been a lot of people tested. So we see, we see how our staff are doing with isolation, with P P E, with hand hygiene. They really are doing an incredible job.
Is there turnaround time for the test results these days?
Which kinds?
COVID.
Well, there's two different.
If you go to the clinic and get tested, when do you get the results?
There's two different tests you can get. So the biofire, which is a respiratory panel, it can be as fast as 45 minutes. It just depends on what else is going on in the lab. Our insight test, the send-out test, we've had some come back within one day, but it's generally a day or two.
And that's really steady now.
Yes.
Who determines which test you get?
We, so if for our employees, they talk to employee health, and we say, and right now, we have enough supply. We generally, if we want to wrap the results, it might get the person back to work sooner or whatever, we're approving the biofire. If it's a non-K V H, we ask the health department to determine that that's needed. Or if it's like a patient, then that's up to the clinician. So they use biofire frequently in the ER.
Is the biofire, is it like more expensive and rare? You can run out of it? Is there a material for it? Or? So we currently have almost 1,000 biofires available. We have had fairly steady supply chain. We are taking that to the bank. With season hits, the biofire has to be really limited, and the other different treatments. So we're trying to be good stewards of that resource. So we're trying to limit it to where it's time critical. So that's why the emergency room is a big consumer of, that's why. You know, if we've got somebody who has symptoms and is an employee, and they test positive for rhinovirus and negative for COVID, then don't have to worry about exclusion once the better they come back. And that's kind of the rationale. Now that the insight test is sitting out, it's pretty reasonable to ask somebody to self-isolate for a day or two. And again, that's the situation on the way through October. There's 20 seconds.
So direct contact with the self-quarantine, are they tested? Or are they tested this self-quarantine?
The T test message for releasing out of quarantine is not recommended for healthcare workers to return to work at CDC.
Okay.
But they recommend a symptom and, so if you're positive, so it's 10 days and what, 24 hours fever-free and improvement of symptoms for mild to moderate illness, serious illness, or neocompromised patients, they have to be out of work for 20 days and 24 hours fever-free and symptoms.
So based on that, you have a close contact who, some of the employees identified as a close contact, and they're completely asymptomatic.
That's the difference. So that was isolation. Quarantine is a different quarantine. It's 14 days from the last day of exposure.
What if they test positive? Let's say they get tested and they're.
Then they go to the isolation.
Isolation, and then it's a flat 10 days regardless of how they're feeling, minimum?
Yeah, so if they have symptoms, you start from the point of symptoms, the first symptom. If you have a test only, and then you're asymptomatic, you go from the day of the test.
Okay.
Well, you go from whichever it's sooner, which is a colleague who's started to figure out, is what Dr. Larson has told me, and that some of them are, their symptoms, they get their tests, and they are out of isolation that same day.
So they'll say, oh, I was symptomatic eight days ago or whatnot. Yeah, okay, interesting.
How accurate are the tests?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head.
The, well, the insight test is PCR test, which is close, we have to. So my wrong review, my definition, 100% sensitive, 100% specific because of school scan. The biofire is, from what I've seen on the order of 98, 99. And that sounds really impressive, but a lot of point-of-care testing, the 15-minute test that's being used in sports and in D C, is about 85% sensitive, which means if you test 100 positive individuals, you'll miss 15 positives. And so it's one of, we're going to have access to that test, and we have no idea how we're going to use it. All it seems to be good for is a false sense of security.
And we're getting those from, essentially from the state through the, or from the federal government through the state because they want to get them out there. And we really are sitting here struggling with how we will use those that all public health departments, all hospitals are going to be receiving them. The other thing I want to point out is we believe that this is how you stop this disease. So there is an, there is an opportunity for an essential worker, a healthcare worker, to come back before the quarantine period, isolation period, is over. We're not going to pull that trigger unless it is someone that we need to provide direct patient care, and we critically need those people. So this is not a get-out-of-jail-free card for everybody who works at K V H. Again, because we go back to, we believe this is how you stop the disease, and we don't want people working that don't need to be working.
And one of the strategies, if we start seeing large numbers, is to deploy COVID-positive asymptomatic healthcare workers in care of COVID-positive patients.
So can you tell me about repeat exposures? If somebody has a confirmed case, is a confirmed COVID case, they recover, let's say they even test negative afterwards. If they're identified as a close contact in the future, they're still eligible for isolation procedures?
If they had COVID, no, they're considered, there's 90 days.
Okay.
Whatever reason, that's the number of public health and they use out there. If you've had COVID and you, let's say I, I'm positive, and 10 days, or I don't know, a month for now, I get symptoms again, you could test them, and even if they test positive, you don't put them in isolation again, and you don't consider them contagious. Outside of the 90 days, yes, you do, and you start over.
Okay.
Now, if I had an exposure, though, right? I was exposed to someone, and I was in quarantine for 14 days, and now I get out of quarantine, and then I get exposed again, then you're quarantined again.
Okay, but somebody who's a positive case, if they're exposed or whatnot within those 90 days, they've got a fourth field or whatnot protection?
Yes.
Okay.
It's often they have immunity. One of the things that we don't understand fully, so the PCR tests are looking for fragments of messenger RNA. That's kind of like a fly's leg. Doesn't tell you much about the fly. And in particular, it doesn't tell you whether or not the flies have a close encounter with the fly's water. So there is some thought that some of the prolonged positive, some of the asymptomatic prolonged positives, you may be detecting mRNA of dead virus. But there are also patients who, they're starting to be called the long-haul patients, who remain symptomatic for up to eight weeks.
There's no easy way to tell if they still have infected virus within that.
So kudos to our, seriously, this community has been so well partnered with public health in ways that I think are pretty transparent.
Definitely something to be proud of.
So the other thing I want to tell you about in my report is just about how public health are doing. So as of today, we have 456 employees who are complete. So they've either gotten a flu vaccine or have been vaccinated, or they signed the declination. Out of 639, so that's 71%. We have seen an increase in declarations this year. I can tell already because there's been 20, which, for the overall employee population, that represents 3%, and we were below 2% last year. So I think part of that is people have said, well, I'm already having to wear a mask. That was the only reason I went ahead and got the flu shot before, because I didn't want to wear a mask, but now I already have to wear it.
A little history there. A few years ago, I forget when this was, a couple of years ago, we talked about this at Q I Council. The policy, the policy at the time was, you really should get a flu shot. If you decline for, you know, a number of these reasons, then if you feel symptoms coming on, wear a mask or something. But the Q I Council decided that we wanted to be a little more proactive. It seemed like a lot of people were opting out for sort of lame reasons. And so what we decided was, and Mandy, you can correct me if I'm not phrasing this properly, but that we would restrict the reasons you could opt out, and that if you did opt out for one of the reasons, one of those reasons, then you would have to wear a mask for the extent of flu season, just, you know, not just when you're symptomatic. And so that motivated a lot of people, the flu shots, who are just like needles or whatever, because they didn't want to wear a dang mask all the time. So that's why she said, like, don't wear a mask all the way, that's the objective. Did I miss anything?
Well, we don't restrict, a person can decline for whatever reason they want. We started asking them why.
Yeah.
To give us their reason when they do sign the declination. But yeah, and the board approved the policy and endorsed the policy that employees who were not vaccinated would have to wear masks to hire flu season. We used to only implement the mask-wearing if there was a certain amount of community spread and outbreaks. And now it's during the flu period, season. Also, we, one of the things that we've done that I think has really improved our rate, and we still are doing this year even without, is that you will not be allowed to work until November 1st if you don't have documentation of a flu vaccine or the declination on file.
A lot of people were saying, I don't have any religious objections anymore. I don't want to wear a mask. Go ahead and give me the shot.
Can I just say, though, that this really high vaccination rate reflects our, a good relationship with both of our bargaining units. So that was really rocky, particularly with the nursing unions for a while. And we get ahold of the nursing unions, and they are fully supportive, and Mandy keeps that conversation going. And it's a conversation, frankly, we're starting to have about COVID vaccinations as well, so.
You guys have some?
Yes, secret stats.
That's, meanwhile, I can't unless there was any questions we'll have about. I will say, on the Q I Council dashboard, the workplace violence events will be updated now that I've gone through all that bad data, and it'll go through the full 12 months on that dashboard. But other than.
Did you talk in here about the copy process? We are going to have another meeting in November. Could you just really quickly just talk about the timeline?
Sure. So it's been a weird year, and we've been busy in quality a little bit more than usual. So we did get started in October with reviewing how we've done so far in 2020. But as far as bringing that together and getting it to Q I Council, I normally would have done that by October, and just didn't get there to that point this year. But what we started in September was really saying, hey, it has been a weird year, leaders. You have some ideas about what you want to improve this year. And maybe we didn't do that, but we've also done some really incredible stuff with COVID or other activities. Let's reflect on that and look at our copy that we planned on. Do we need to hit the reset button? Or have you made progress despite all this? And let's look at those copies and start drafting that for 2021. So our department directors have all done that and drafted them, and they will be going to administration for review. And then get to Julie in administration. And then they will, we added Q I Council in November to review those drafts and get them to all of you for review and feedback, especially to help us think about where we might need to narrow our focus or get even more focused, you know? There is a lot going on, and sometimes I think we try to boil the ocean. So really helping us focus, especially aligning with strategy, you know? And I know you've been having these driving sessions, you know? Where could we even come closer to what you've been thinking of? And then so that will go back to Q I Council in December for us to see any adjustments and make a recommendation to the board, hopefully to approve or to approve the copy plan at the December board meeting. The next action is January.
So there are multiple levels of review, obviously. And we're going to review it at Q I Council in November, and we'll be able to review it here and give all sorts of feedback for the final review that I'm doing at our December meeting. On a fun note, I wanted to mention one other thing, that the last time, you know, Carrie and I went and presented the state catch awards to people in their workplace, that was a lot of fun, and we hear that people like that, so we're going to do it again.
And we're going to film it so that we can show it at the next electronic employee form.
Nice.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mandy?
If you have questions for me.
Would have anything else for Mandy? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
CEO report.
I am happy to answer any questions. I do want to add, because this week really has been caught up in a lot of conversation about our employees as community members when it comes to. But a couple of things that are going on. The governor's office has sent out a draft proclamation with regard to the elective procedure, and that's been updated. Mandy and I have gone over it, it's been updated a couple of times now, and new drafts have come out. The Washington State Hospital Association has some significant concerns about the latest version. That being said, they had a meeting all set up for us to go over it, and a new draft came out. So the last time we came to a solution with the governor's office, the hospitals were actually at the table. But this impacts all healthcare providers, and very few of us were at the table this time. So it seemed to have relied more on the Department of Health, Department of Labor and Industry, and input from the unions than it did providers. So dentists, orthodontists, physicians, hospitals are all very, very concerned about the impact that this would have, essentially has the potential to shut down hospitals again like it did at the end of March and April. So we're on that, don't know quite how panicked to be about that.
What is the timeline for something like that? How soon could we expect those measures to take place?
It was almost immediate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, and there was not a very long comment period. So again, just a lot of sort of off-the-go kind of activity that was going on. Some of the most problematic language, we think, got eliminated in this last version, but we're waiting for wishes to do their evaluation.
The last draft moved to the state.
I thought it was the 24th. Yeah, so, but again, it's still draft, and they haven't met yet. The other thing we're working on, and we had a couple of meetings today, is the vaccine, COVID vaccine distribution plan for the country, the state, the county. All we really can do at this point is identify who the players are going to be here, who the logistics, who folks are going to be. But we're really, really pushing the county on the communications plan. If we are going to have people fly into being vaccinated, we're going to have to start by convincing primary care providers and providers, because that's who our patients and our people are going to listen to. So it's not a matter of telling the doctors, the vaccine's available, give it to all your patients. We're really encouraging the county and the folks involved with this to begin with the providers and the communication plan to answer their questions and persuade them about the safety of the vaccine. So just this week, we started those conversations.
Where can we find the safety data for the vaccine?
It doesn't exist.
Yes, exactly. Hence the skepticism. So this is sort of being approached like it's just another flu vaccine, and we just, it's just all about the logistics. We don't, we see much more skepticism than that, even when we, they have surveyed healthcare. services, they're no more ready to take this vaccine than the general public. Those are the two things I would add. I just want to call out that Dee Dee Utley was appointed to the Kidney South County Board of Health and we're very excited about that.
She'll be great, yeah.
She will just be, she touches that in so many ways. So amazing. Are there any questions?
I wanted to call out again, the foundation, the incredible support from our foundation and they are just rocking and rolling with this and I think they've supported us so much this year.
Absolutely. Fantastic.
Are there any updates related to the Kaiser contract since we last spoke?
So Kaiser sent out a letter that was, I would characterize it as clear as mud. So we began receiving phone calls again. We've had some, we being SCUT have had some communications with Kaiser. They have signaled to their enrollees that they will have a contract for all of next year. We still have not received that confirmation, so. Correct? So we anticipate at this point that we will have that extension in place. And again, they've sent out a letter and I don't know if any of you received it, but it certainly got people confused and worked up again and they were calling today saying, can I just sign up for Kaiser? What, what? So that was kind of where Becky spoke, where I got a couple of calls today. So yeah.
So it looks pretty likely that we will go into extension through 2021?
That's our, yes, that's our intent and you know, our community, the Kaiser community, so we would be letting down a lot of neighbors and friends at this point. I don't like that answer, but I can see that.
Anything else, Julie?
I got you.
And then maybe, Mandy, do you have any input on human resources?
Yes, so we just wanted to recap. Over the past year, HR has worked really hard to capture all the regulatory changes happening around COVID and just in general, and also assessing our organizational policies to make sure that they're meeting the needs for the organization and our staff. So we wanted to recap that a little bit and as you remember, we were, we implemented the low census policy for four pay periods in the summer that ended in July 4th. It allowed staff to use our low census program to reduce their hours to meet our productivity needs and volumes and that expired July 4th. We also expanded our float pay premium to help out with the alternative care facility. That's something that was of course covered in our contracts with our union employees, but of course did not cover the location of alternative care facilities. We weren't predicting COVID, so we were flexible with that for our employees. And then the state actually allowed some flexibility to use all sick leave and EIB, Extended Illness Bank for childcare. That's not usually something that was approved in our policies. Usually it had to be a sick child, not just daycare issues. We have been flexible with that as well during this period to match kind of where the state is with their sick leave, but we are asking employees to still follow our process and submit leave and plan ahead and work with their managers on that. And then the last one is the administrative pay policy that we talked about in July and that was kind of a unique policy that we drafted, a new policy for temporary reasons. And that was for those that, those situations where employees are excluded from work by us because of our decision and our policy and they don't qualify, it doesn't really cover under our sick leave or our state leave benefits, then we had the administrative pay option, which we only had about four people really take advantage of. And as you recall, it was around the eyewear discussion and we were working on logistics and trying to figure out our communication to make sure our employees really understood our policy on eyewear. Since then, people have been great. We have had no other issues on that and we have had no other really qualifying issues that would relate to the administrative pay policy. So we're recommending to go ahead and expire that effective now. We do know that there's lots of guidelines still changing and so as Mandy mentioned, the exclusions have increased, but we look at each of those situations carefully and those really are defined in other ways in our policies. So we don't feel the need to continue that administrative pay policy and I open, I'm open for any questions or concerns on that.
And I would just say, it does not require board action. It will expire in the absence of action.
Okay, yeah. Any questions?
Quick question on, yeah, Perry Tech students, so are they part of the volunteers and are they medical assistants or bill and coding?
Yeah. Yeah, the majority of Perry Tech students that we have are medical assistants, which is a very high demand, high demand area. So we are definitely keeping them going and actually we've worked in kind of a recognition to carry bar as well. We have really worked to create a recruiting streamline directly from those student experiences to hire them early, even if they're not licensed yet, pending their license. So that, well, if they're, if they're waiting to be licensed, what was happening was that other employers were snatching them up after they leave their internship experience from us. And so we created kind of a flexible recruiting program so that we could get them started early and trained while they, while they have their license pending. And so that's been a very, very effective student relationship. We do have, we have focused more of our students on medical needs that could help support areas right now, but we've worked with the senior leaders to make sure that it's safe and that it's approved for students to come back into those areas.
That's great.
Yeah, our volunteers are still at, are still at home. We are just trying to challenge ourselves on how we could use them safely and even remote, remotely, but that's another group that we are actually planning on some engagement activities with. Kyle West is hoping to connect with them and just kind of get their ideas, update them on everything happening with KVH and really keep them engaged as well.
John?
Mandy, I have a question about one of the charts you submitted in the HR board report.
Okay.
Just help me understand how to do the math on employee copulation. For example, 20 September, we've got 396 full-time, 127 part-time, but those don't even come close to adding up to 621. I just want to understand how the math is done on this chart.
Yeah, great question. What we don't have listed there is per diems. So we have a lot of per diems that are kind of on call or as needed. We don't have those listed there. So I'm happy to do that in the future if that helps clarify.
You know me, I just like math to add up, but that explains it perfectly. So I will know how to do my own kind of equation to figure out the hidden people.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Medical staff, Dr. O'Brien, are you with us?
First of all, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Hello.
That's a yes.
Yes.
Great, great. I've been in and out, Zoom has been dropping me off and on. I've had to log back in from the beginning a couple of times. Anyway, long story short, we have a long list and Sharon has assured me that you have the same list that I do in the same order, since there are so many due to Orthopedics Northwest and Yakima Urology applying for provisions. I will not go into detail in any one along the way, I'll just read the list, but I will be happy to answer any specific questions on any provider, should that be requested. So we have 13 initial appointments. Anthony Longo, Orthopedics Northwest, applying for active status. Susan Campias, ONRAD Telaradiology, applying for associate status. Michael Chang, a spine surgeon from Orthopedics Northwest, applying for provisional associate. Brian Cox, Yakima Urology, applying for provisional associate. Robert Green, Orthopedics Northwest, applying for provisional associate. Eric Lauer, Yakima Urology, applying for provisional associate. Navrav Nagra, a hospitalist, applying for associate. David Thorne, Yakima Urology, applying for associate. And Dwight Thompson, applying for associate. And Matthew Almond, Urology, Yakima Urology. Michael Mitkowsky, ONRAD Telaradiology, associate. And then there's two allied health professionals, initial appointments. Louis Ortega and Michael Schultis, also from Orthopedics Northwest. And we have, those are the initial appointments. I will go ahead and read the rest of the list, realizing that the MEC reviewed all of these applications and are recommending the board approve it as requested. Without any further questions, intending any further questions, I should say. Abel Lee, ophthalmologist, reappointment, associate. Vanessa Tseng, Virginia Mason Telstra provider, associate, reappointment. Sarah Hendges, PA, Clayellum Family Medicine, applying for reappointment. And Lauren Lufick, PA, emergency department, applying for reappointment. Those are the appointments. We do have a few other changes to recommend, but are there any questions on any of these appointments and requests?
I have a question about the next group and I'm not sure if you're going to go through that. The associate to active, I didn't see any of their files in the group that we usually go through. Is that a different procedure for people going from associate to active?
Yes, yes, that's just a status change. That doesn't require the usual work of reappointment or initial appointment.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, are there any questions on the ones I just read through? If not, I'll go on to the status change as just requested. Frank Cruz, David Frick, Beth Ann Gremai, Ken Lindsay, Andrew Pete and Monica Romanco. The reason we're requesting their changed status to active is because the bylaws are vague in terms of what associate, it would imply that associate status cannot vote or participate in the MEC or for the chief of staff, et cetera, which is wrong. It should not be that way. So we were wanting just to change them to active status. As you recall, in the old days, they came here from elsewhere, hired by somebody else. So associate was appropriate, but since these people are here working on a regular basis long-term, we want to change their status to active and the board does have to approve that request. And lastly, Sheldon Jensen is doing interventional radiology and occasionally that requires sedation of the patient that he would actually be the ordering physician for. Our nurses do all the recording, obviously, monitoring, but he has an extensive experience in conscious sedation and that we reviewed his logs and he's, his logs are extensive and he assures me that this is something he's done for a long time. So we're just requesting to add the privileges to Sheldon Jensen, our radiologist, to do conscious sedation. If no more questions, I'll let you debate how you want to approach these multiple issues or just, I guess you could just do a blanket.
From a thumb, as listed. So. A motion by Terry, second by Matt, to approve the list as provisional, active associates, allied health, and then change in the ER department to, from associate to active, as listed in the list, page 29 of the board notes.
And add the additional privileged requested.
For Dr. Bellin, yeah.
Jensen, yes.
Adding. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. You, Dr. Martin?
Thank you. Thank you.
This is like as good time as any, as how great it is to have Shannon Carlson back. Now, I know it's in your report, your report too, but she originally taught me how to read these credential files. So if she hadn't done that or she'd done a bad job, think of all the maniacs who would be running around.
She taught you how to read?
She taught me how to read. The big hill to climb, they just.
Welcome back.
Great, everything. Well, that, you should have put that in a minute.
That is the one thing that I was going to break out of my report to call out, so thank you. A couple of other things that have happened, this is a very brief report because we had extensive review of the medical staffing and plans going forward last Thursday. There have been some developments since I put this report together. Earlier today, Dr. Larson, Julie and I met again with Dean Heinzelman to go over the current situation and coordinate efforts around COVID at the university. And it's, Julie's mentioned it earlier, it was mentioned on that call and it appears repeating the level of cooperation and coordination in this county is not feasible across the state. And I'm grateful for that. Also, not in the.
Can I just say, and we're grateful to the board for adopting that posture, that our, our assets, our activities are dedicated to the greater county effort and we didn't build walls and we didn't invoice people for everything and we really appreciate being able to articulate that approach to the community and feeling confident when we offer our resources that the board understands that that's what we're doing. So thanks. Sorry.
No worries. The next new development is that today, we finalized a contract with Dr. Gibson to transition to the newly created position of medical director for clinic operations. That's reflective of the realization that most of the, most of the touches and most of the revenue we generate, we don't generate on the hospital service. And that entire sphere doesn't have a director level represented. And we wanted to emphasize the importance of it. Dr. Gibson has some great ideas about how we can improve care, standardize care moving forward, and so that's an exciting transition. He will step into that position January 16th. Another transition is if the last eight months of talking anything, that the job of chief medical officer in a pandemic is not a point five FTE. And the number of times that I've been, the number of times that I've been scheduled in a clinic is small, the number of times that I've had to cancel that clinic at the last minute is probably close to 50%. Doctor's staff and it's not fair to my patients. So effective January 27th, I will be moving CMO to a point eight and I'll be stepping away from office practice, continue with home and hospice. Fact of the matter is that a large number of my patients have outmigrated over the last eight months just because they prefer to see somebody they can see. So the impact on patients should be fairly minimal, but I think this job has gotten too big for me to try to split myself quite so many ways.
That being said, I will just speak for Dr. Martin, it's very difficult for a family medicine doctor to talk about stepping away from family medicine practice. So we'll be there for him and maybe even offer him a per diem contract or something.
You'll be best in the clinic, for sure.
Only working on the range.
Any other questions from the board? Thanks, Dr. Martin. Finance?
Thank you. My written report is on pages 31 and 32. I'd like to jump to page 36, which is the P L, and just talk a little bit about some of the variances there. We had a softer month with regards to patient volume. We came in under budget, revenue $528,000. We came in under budget, revenue five hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. But we had almost five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of COVID testing. So if you, without the COVID testing, we had essentially a million dollar, a little over a million dollar shortfall in revenue. It was, appears to be mainly just vacation and provider related. We just, the surgery cases were a little off. We had a number of different providers in other areas that seemed to take time off. And we're back in two October. We're back to exceeding budget on the revenue. So I think this is just a little bit of a blip. On the other operating revenue this month, we do not have, we did not recognize any cares money. And so that's why there's, we've had large positive variances with other operating revenue. But did not, and will not, for the remainder of the year, we will not be recognizing any additional cares funds throughout the remainder of the year. With regard to expenses, most expenses were pretty good. We had some variances and most of the variances are volume related. With temporary labor, we had, we had some medical leaves that we were staffing in a family birthplace and ICU and a little bit in E R. And then with, so that was, and then also, we had some of that, about forty thousand of that variance relates to expenses, staffing, alternate care facility, the contract invoices for those contract staff that came through. We will likely be able to reimburse for some of that, some of that variance. And then on the supplies, we, a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of vaccine expense hit this month for flu vaccine. And with purchase services, we, the COVID testing tests, a lot of the tests are sendouts up to inside. And so a good part of that variance relates to the positive volume with the testing.
So Scott, you just filled me in a little bit. I know that we were covering that for a period of time, but insurance, I mean, health is people's health insurance.
Yes, it is.
So, so is that, so is that a revenue generator then?
It actually has become a revenue generator.
Okay. But is, was the idea that there was a lag because the insurance companies hadn't caught up with it or something?
There was, there's, on page thirty-seven, you can look at, you can look at the COVID. In the middle portion of page thirty-seven shows the COVID. And so we've, we've generated about two point two million dollars of COVID-related testing. And we are being paid for it. We are not balance billing patients that if they have copays in response, that they're indicated, we're not balance billing through any of the COVID test that occurs in the clinics. If there is some, a COVID test that occurs in the E R and it relates to admission or E R care, there's a lot of other charges related to that and you're not able to separate that out easily. So there, but generally speaking, for just COVID tests that come in, we don't balance bill patients for any of that. The, so you see that COVID actually is a revenue generator, Matt. And it's one of the reasons we have positive revenue variance. It's, we've had some other, other things that we've done intentionally with E N T that was not budgeted, but that's generated some additional revenue. But with COVID itself, it has, it's been a revenue generator.
Just so I understand, we don't balance bill for COVID testing. That's the idea that we don't collect the copays?
That is correct.
So were we to do that, we would be making more, but the idea is it's worth it to cover your insurance companies and it's important to the community and that kind of.
That's exactly.
Part of that community strategy is we don't want any barriers to people coming in and testing.
So we did, we did have a positive operating margin for the month of a hundred and fifty-five, fifty-six thou, glasses, sixty-six thousand dollars, a little bit behind the monthly budget that we set. But we also, year to date, we're two point six, almost, almost two point seven million dollars positive operating margin. Head of budget by almost one point one two million. So there will be some coming, a little bit of flipping in some expenses. And as you see down in non-operating expenses, we have most of the expenses related to the Medical Arts Center building, the depreciation expense and whatnot. How, when it was mainly a rentals property, most of those expenses related to non-operating expenses. And so they're recorded down in, in a non-operating expense. It's to our advantage for us as an organization to have them as operational. So when the building went operational in March, April timeframe, those expenses are eligible to be operating expenses. And so we will be doing a reclass to move some of those non-operating expenses up to operating as we start to recapitulate. We have an accrual for the expense right now, but there's a bit of a change. It doesn't change your overall bottom line. The net income is going to remain the same. But this is actually, this expense is allowable cost related to our R H C encounter rate. So we want to have it as treated as operational expense. So that, so if you'd also turn to, you can ask a question, how can you make money when you have essentially a half a million dollar shortfall? On page thirty-five, you see some things that are causing it. We had, on the payer mix analysis or summary, you see the, an initial payer mix that's thirty-two point oh three in eighteen and thirty-two point eight one in nineteen to thirty-four point five four percent. So that, we are, that, that two percent change or a little over two percent change is generating a lot of additional cash for operations. And so we have, we had a rate cash month, almost twenty-one thousand dollars less than the prior month, almost eight point four million dollars, a little over eight point four million dollars. So we are generating a lot of revenue. So the, our contractual adjustment is actually lower because we're recovering more. So this is a reason for improved financial performance. Payer shift, and we're also doing, we're doing a better job with revenue capture and getting paid for the work we're doing. That revenue cycle efforts continue to, we're better at it. And it's being reflected in collections and efforts. And so we, and the other positive point on this, our days and accounts receivable dropped the day to seventy-seven. And our days cash on hand increased six days to a hundred and seventy-five days. A hundred and seventy-five.
That's great.
So this is, this is a very good, a very solid financial report in spite of some of the weak volume, but the weaker volume is just a little bit of a blip related to.
Can I ask you to, on page thirty-four, line thirty-two and thirty-three, we had a conversation about charges and being fiscally responsible from the patient's perspective. And I just want to point out that our operating expense per adjusted patient day this year, year to date, is thirty-eight, three thousand six hundred, three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Last year, year to date, it was four thousand four hundred and seventy-six. So that cost, that actual cost per patient day, year over year, is down about fourteen percent. And then the revenue that we're generating per that same adjusted patient day is at four zero two-two as opposed to forty-five eighty-six. So that's down twelve point three percent. That represents what the patients pay in large part. So, you know, we talked about the fact that you don't just get a charge willy-nilly. You have to be responsible and keep costs down. And I think that just really reflects the discipline among our managers and everybody top to bottom to respect that.
Questions about the, yes?
Doc, could you remind me what, under the pair mix, what actually classifies as other?
Other, other is workers' comp.
Veterans?
Veterans, CHAMPUS, L I. It's in that bucket.
Thank you.
So Julie, I want to follow you on that. So what you're saying is that we are cutting costs and passing some of that.
Right. And, and we're under budget year over year, or we're under budget year to date for costs. But the point is, as we have grown and we're providing more services, we're adding a very slim layer of cost. We're adding very low incremental cost. So that, so that next adjusted patient day drives down the cost of all the adjusted patient days. And that's true, I think, I've always maintained that a well-used critical access hospital is the most efficient system out there. So costs are going down and charges to the patients based on that same algebra.
So Scott, you have a resolution?
You have a resolution. Yes, that's on page forty-five. And this is similar to when, when we dispose of personal property, equipment, things like that, we have to, we bring a surplus property resolution to you all for approval. When this, this one is related to surplus real property. And it came about from one of the audit points from the State Auditor's Office. We, they took exception to the fact that we were renting one of our homes that we own to a resident. And they thought we were in violation of a rule. And we've identified that there was a provision in the state law with approval to, that we can say that that building is surplus and that we can rent it out and not be in violation. So this is a resolution to, to help us be compliant with.
And that could be indefinite.
It's in surplus, but we don't have to sell it.
Correct, it, correct.
Designation of course?
And I actually, we wrote this in quite, I didn't identify the specific building, the specific home, but we own about twenty, how many homes?
Fourteen. Don't grow that number.
Oh, sorry. We own a number of homes. And I wrote it vaguely so it would give us, although we don't want to rent to, we don't want to be landlords. But it was written to give us flexibility for any of those homes that.
As far as you know, I guess it works probably with somebody who doesn't want, this is kind of satisfied the auditor.
It is. There are, if you will sign this tonight, we will scan it to them and I will, they're waiting for this to not have an audit point.
And this one just takes the two signatures?
Yep, yep.
I'll move to approve the resolution twenty dash zero seven. Motion by Matt, second by Erica, to approve resolution twenty dash zero seven, surplus real property. All in favor? Aye, no opposed.
Thank you. And then lastly, related to John's, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so we had a situation come up since the finance meeting. And when we looked at it, we didn't want to wait for the next board meeting because it's of a timely nature to be ready for the new provider who will start right after January first. And it involves both some equipment for that space and an upgrade of Suite B over in the surgical facilities over there. And so Scott and I walked through it today and he's presented some numbers on some extra sheets. Packet. And so Scott, I'll hand it back to you to kind of walk them through some of the details. And then we can use this time for a little discussion, which might really lead to a vote on whether or not we're financially.
Well, this, this property didn't follow our normal capital approval process. We have a capital committee that reviews capital requests. And it, we didn't, it didn't go to that committee because we didn't have a signed contract with Dr. Zammott. And so with, after that committee met, Dr. Zammott signed the contract. And with Dr. Zammott coming, that means that we were going to put him with the other general surgeons. And that meant there's not enough room in Suite A for the vascular, Dr. Zammott and the other general surgeons. So we needed to move them to Suite V, which is the Dr. Sand space. And so the, so, and then when they walk through the space, it's very dated and it needs to, it needs to be refreshed. So Ron has, Ron received a quote from B K Powell. And it will cost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a little over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to renovate that space. And it will, it will look very much like the Suite C space that we renovated. It was Dr. Wells's office. And it will end up looking very much like that, that space with the same color palette. And Ron actually is hanging around if you have any particular questions about that space. And then that he can answer. So you've got the floor plan and there's not prices on it, but the list of work that will be done. And that will come to a total of twenty thousand dollars. And then the second piece is, is Dr. Zammott, the vascular surgeon, will need some ultrasound equipment and other equipment to be able to effectively care for patients and treat patients here in the Kids House County. And the total, the total purchase price for that equipment, including tax, is a little over two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And the list, I think I passed, that's that list that you all have in front of you. I passed that out. And Dr. Martin, do you have any comments about either of those here?
I think that the, the, it is probably a conservative one, I would say, for those numbers. I think this is the opportunity to bring Mike Zammott to this community is pretty amazing. I have friends in the community that were going to Sunnyside to see him. I've worked with him over the years. You're saying they live here, but we're going to Sunnyside to get the treatment? Yes. When I mentioned to Dr. Gibson, he was actually impressed for a moment. Yes. That was three, six days ago. No, I think this is an incredible opportunity. It strengths our healthcare program. There are some bread and butter problems that we simply can't take care of because of the lack, diabetic coags, the lack of a vascular surgeon. There's the potential to do the drug biopsy, to think about, to support the high rate of dialysis. Dialysis and drugstore surgery going in. So this, I think is really moving us up. We're still a critical access hospital, but we're starting to look like a community hospital in terms of our staffing and care that we're, what we're able to give our patients and our neighbors locally.
So I want to own the abrupt way the remodel is coming to the board. When I think about, we talked about this as a move and I was using the wrong language when I talked to folks. Because we are relocating all of our general surgeons and adding vascular surgery. And it really doesn't make any sense to put them in and then try to work around them. We need them sixty days. Ron has B K Powell teed up to get going on this right away. If we waited until December third, we would not have been able to start Dr. Zammott and move the surgeons on January fourth. So I made this, we really need to get this done and refreshed, then move the general surgeons, move in Zammott. So I ran out of time and did not attend to the calendar the way I should have.
So I just wanted to make sure, because you mentioned the auditor earlier. I just want to make sure, because of that vote we took. wanted to make sure, because of that whole, we took, we don't have to go to that to bed, B K Powell.
Correct, this is small works.
And the surgeons are also moving into this new space, what's going to occupy their current space?
So we're looking at putting all of our pre-ump folks that are going to be overrun by the lab expansion staff. So when you approach the multiplex now, you'll have all the pre-ump folks there, wound care will be there, general surgery, vascular surgery, orthopedic surgery, the diaphragm, all those folks will be in one location.
That sounds good.
That's heroic. Can you remind me at what point does it stop being small works?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, wow.
And another thing about Suite B, it really needed an upgrade for access to make it follow today's rules, so that vestibule is stricken and the door greatly widened, so it's easier for people to get in and out of that space. And we've been through Suite C, again, it has a lot of similarities, like the color scheme and all that. And then procedure room one oh seven, office will be stricken, one oh six, and one oh seven will take up a vast majority of the one oh six space, because it's a much larger procedure room too, for all the necessary equipment. So those are kind of the two large physical construction parts that have to be done. And then a lot of the rest is all new carpeting, new paint, just to make it look and match kind of the more modern look of the buildings next door. And it gives it a whole new lifespan that we can utilize it going forward, so.
How many square feet is that? Russell, how many square feet is that? What do you guess?
It's pretty large, I mean, I'd say fifty by a hundred.
Ron, do you have that number off the top of your head?
It feels like.
It might just heal.
Four thousand square feet or.
He's there.
It's thirty-five or four.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's larger than Suite C.
Yeah.
Suite C has three rooms, this has five exam rooms plus the procedure room, so.
Well, Helen Madison Ellensburg, before we moved with seventy-five hundred square feet, you have twenty exam rooms and a lab. So, but footprint wise, I think it runs like about half the size of that thing.
Ron, do you know what size it is?
Jeff, can you answer that?
I don't remember.
Yeah, we leased it for so long to Dr. Sand, I, we didn't check that number because we weren't using it for a long time.
Sure lots deeper than the building from Stranion.
Yeah.
So we did two different motions then?
Just one. If you'll provide a project budget allowance of three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
I would move to approve that request.
Motion by John to approve the two requests, second by Terry. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Is that Doppler, is that about the same one that the hospital has? I don't know.
No, no, this is, it's different, this is a different software. And the Doppler that we have is more than that goes. It also has in there an API set, I think, ankle radio index, which back in the day you just had to go, you know, perfect stuff, you can't go here, they want to be honest, with what the sound and the weight form document is. So the same one needs to be a best I'll script procedure and put fifteen thousand dollars in the capital line.
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
So move on to operations with Chief Nursing Officer, Vicki.
Hi, good evening. My report, can you hear this okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. My report's on page forty-six. I don't really have anything additional to add, except I do want to mention our visitors' policy. We do review the status of that and discuss, because a lot of nursing staff do, you know, have, have some questions about when, when we can release that, when we can allow visitors. Currently, we've decided to keep, keep it as it is. We do have special circumstances, and they're utilized probably, you know, at least once a day or even more often for those patients that are high needs, end of life, and situations that are just sensitive, we will allow visitors in, and of course, we screen them, and there's certain rules around that, too. We've also seen families go around to the windows in the rooms, particularly in family birthing, grandparents and siblings go around to the, to the rooms and can see their new, their new family member. And so we do look at that pretty much week, on a weekly basis, to see if there's any adjustments we need to make. So far, it seems to be okay, and we really haven't had a lot of issues come up as a result of that. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
I have asked Vicki to address the visitors' policy on a monthly basis, just because it does have the attention of our community, and we want to get back to normal.
Yeah, thank you. So family birthing, you can, as long as they come in and stay there and end of life, or?
Yeah.
A few other?
Yeah, sometimes there's just patients with special needs that just, that other person there just kind of helps relieve anxiety and just helps with the overall care.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Anything else, Vicki? Any questions from the board?
One quick question, so we're doing the flu vaccine clinic in Cleelam. I thought there was also one scheduled in here at the fairgrounds, is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct. I don't know the exact date.
November seventh.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you guys able to hear me? This is Michelle. Yep, yep. Yeah, it's November seventh is the Ellensburg Flu Clinic and Vaccine Clinic, but I also just wanted to tie into what Vicki was saying about families and visitors being able to go on the outsides, the outside of the building sometimes. And we just put in an order to actually label those windows, so a patient would be able to say, go to window one fifty-one, and it would be much easier than trying to figure out, go to the fourth window on the north side or something like that. So that'll be coming along shortly.
Just here in the window.
I just wanted to follow. How are these flu clinics being advertised so that people know to show up?
So they have been advertised through social media, through print media, I believe we did some PSA on the radio to talk about it. It's been done through public health, through their connections. I know that there are flyers throughout upper county, so I have a feeling on both of these locations, we're getting a lot of traction on social media and through contacts, and I'm hopeful, just because we want to see a lot of vaccines, that the two hundred and fifty is not going to last very long at either location.
And so it's part of your advertising, you're letting people know there's a limited supply, first come, first served?
Yeah, we haven't put a number out there, but we've definitely done first come, first served.
Terrific, thank you.
Chief Ambassador Officer, Rhonda Holden.
Hello, everyone. My report's on page forty-seven and forty-eight, and I think the first thing I would like to add is, under Diagnostic Services, we did meet with KDA Architecture on, yesterday, and he provided a cost estimate for us for moving the lab to a temporary lab up in Conference Room A, B, and C, and then also he provided a cost estimate if we were to do the remodel of the laboratory in place with a phased approach. So the next steps on that is, we will be doing a walkthrough with KDA and some of the estimators to take a look at what's overhead of the current lab, what's underneath in the basement, and determine whether or not that's actually feasible, that we could have a phased-in approach as we do the lab expansion. And then we're hoping to be able to bring a presentation to you at the December third meeting, so that we could show you what the project looks like and hopefully get your approval to move ahead.
Yeah, the temporary lab is going to be expensive, it's that balance between how much order is the project, and so I appreciate everybody willing to look at both options with me, so.
So would be, this is the space right here.
Yeah, this would be the.
And approximately, how long would they envision using this space, do you know yet?
That's what we're trying to find out.
That's probably six to nine months, I think, is what it would end up being, where we would have to, you know, disrupt people out of their offices and the conference room. We would even have to take the mezzanine for blood draw area and take over the restrooms on the upper floor, we would have one for staff and one for patients. So it is people giving up a lot of space, but the same thing's going to happen if we have a phased-in approach downstairs. We will have to construct eventually a temporary lab draw station, make sure we have a different restroom that we can access, have a different reception area. So it's, it's a lot of work and disruption, no matter where we go.
And I know we're going to talk about this in December, but do we have a place to hold these public meetings if this space is being used for nine months?
We haven't gotten that far.
Okay.
Conference room at Radio Hill, which is clearly the size. And it has configuration for the video conference.
We're pretty certain that nine months is.
Well, so my question has been, if we use the phased approach and it's eleven months to do it that way, or we just brought everything up here and it's five months to do it up here, is it worth that quicker turnaround time, particularly in a pandemic, to have a core service like lab? We're not hearing that phase is going to be that much longer than temporary, so that's what we're waiting to do the trade-off. We're also hearing that it's going to be expensive, and as Rhonda pointed out, it's going to displace people to move the temporary lab up here. So I'm, I'm a little bit, that is a balance I think we should look at. We don't know when we're going to surge, when we're going to get real busy, and it's going to feel awfully awkward if, you know, we're in the middle of a construction project for a long time. Right now, it's looking like phase is going to be the direction to go.
So I don't know if this is for Rhonda or for Julie, but could you give me the two-minute field elevator pitch on why this is, what improvements they're going to be, why this is going to be better?
Rhonda?
Well, I think several of you have taken a gimba down into the lab, and you've seen how crowded they are, and we continue to need more equipment, and like other technology gets smaller as time goes on, I swear the lab equipment gets bigger and bigger. The last chemistry analyzer, we could hardly get it through the door of the lab to be able to put it into place. And with all the people that we have working in there and the specimens coming in that we're processing, we, we are just tight. We have very little storage space, so we will be more efficient, have a better place for our staff to work, be able to hold our supplies well, receive more specimens, and hopefully we'll be able to do more tests, too, as we bring on additional equipment.
We're also building redundancy into the new plan, so our critical equipment, we're planning on having a sort of a better redundancy plan there.
So if something goes down, we'll have a way to still provide service.
I have one other question about your report, Rhonda, just when you say evaluation of KVH's COVID-19 response, you say after the incident, well, we always evaluate our response. What's an incident?
Whenever we open up Incident Command, we open up Incident Command for lots of different reasons. We opened it for the pandemic with COVID-19 back in March. We open it in fire season, if we have a wildfire that's impacting our area, or we'll open it for mass casualty incidents on I-90. This one just hasn't ended yet, so we didn't, it may not end for a while, and we wanted to evaluate our response.
Right, okay, I get it now, I didn't make the connection to Incident Command, and yeah, so you're talking about the whole dang thing that's been going on for seven months.
And right, Incident Command is still open, so this is more like a mid-action.
Right, so, all right, so it's an interim evaluation of how we've been doing with the pandemic.
Right.
Well, I'd love to.
And that's going to take you twenty minutes, I bet? All right, yeah, sounds good, sounds like it's going to be too complicated. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Rhonda. Carrie Bar, Chief of Clinic Operations.
Good evening, everybody. I, my report starts on the bottom of page forty-eight, and so I'll take any questions on that. I do have one addition, one item. Under Pediatrics, I had mentioned that Dr. Devishare, Dr. Paul Devishare has joined us, but one thing I did not get into the report was that Laurel Gorham, our nurse practitioner, will actually be retiring on October thirtieth. So just wanted to recognize that she's been a pediatric nurse practitioner for twenty-seven years, and to, to of those years, we've, we've had her here at KVH, and we just wish her the best.
Yeah, absolutely, and my, my children have seen her, and I've been appreciative of her on-call help multiple times, so I wish her all the best in retirement.
Can we just sit here and enjoy the fact that we finally have Twenty First Century phone?
Yeah, how are they liking that, the new phone?
You can hang it up, I mean.
Yeah, one of the, one of the ongoing jokes was, and it wasn't actually funny or a joke, was that Stephanie, the clinic manager up there, when she would be on a Zoom call and she would call in, she could actually hang up the phones, so she actually had to wait for the Zoom meeting to end before it would actually disconnect her. So it's one, it was really, it got really awkward, they asked. So, but just a shout out to Jeff's team, they worked really hard in IT to make sure that that happened, and, and it was a heck of a project, there was nothing simple about getting those phones installed. It's working with two service providers and trying to get all of that to communicate and to have white phones on top of it, so just a really heck of a, an accomplishment, so really proud of that.
Okay, any other questions on the board? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
And Community Relations Report, Michelle, Director of Communications and Marketing.
I really don't have a lot to add, just kind of gave you a summary of things that are going on between Carrie's new service lines and new programs and provider announcements, a few little HHS COVID data reporting changes every week or so, we're staying pretty busy. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Just that that should say Chief Communications Officer.
What's that?
Not Director of Communication, Chief Communication.
Got you.
We'll get that fixed, got a couple of them.
Since we passed the agenda, I think she's got to take this title. Yeah, any other questions? Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think the board as a whole appreciates the strategic plan initiatives, all of the finance and sustainability and the recruitment of positions that we've had over the last, I think it's helpful, and I appreciate people's extra time of going in the evenings and putting on these presentations and letting us kind of dig around a little bit, so it's been helpful. We got one more coming up.
Yep, I know, man, he's trying to schedule a facility, and Ron's sparing sort of a walkthrough, so he knows exactly the inventory, building star, a brief look back at master facility planning, but really just getting everybody familiar, we've talked about new services, we've talked about refinancing things, now it's the big picture, the bricks and mortar.
For radiology, can you please call four three zero?
Um, you have?
Call four three zero.
Education and board reports, anything through, any old business? So a new business, we have, we need to do tonight, twenty twenty-one Board Officers, so there's a sheet that reviews Board Officer Committees, actually going back from two thousand sixteen at Al, so we see the divisions and we see the committees. I think as far as committees. Um, I think as far as committees, um, we're going to, if the plan stays the same for this year, then next year we'll change up. Is, is there any objection to that from the board?
Can you please?
Okay. So Board Officers for next year, um, any discussion on Board Officers? Um, so this one, we do need a motion probably. And the, the discussion in the past is just to keep positions for another year, then next year, I would move off, off of the board. Off of the board.
Yeah, in the next.
At the, in the next year. Yeah, so we got it, we're on committees.
Yeah, so we, uh, we'd appreciate a vote since they're specifically called out in the bylaws, some of the committees.
Okay.
We'd like one.
So we need a vote, a vote on each one then?
Correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, so let's do Board Officers first. So, and, any recommendations or discussion on Board Officers?
Um, I think that it makes sense to continue the development strategy that we've had. And, and continue that, the trend of double-year biannual assignment.
And so, yeah, I'd, I'd be willing to serve another year, and you'd be willing to serve another year as Vice Chair Matt, Secretary again. And then I think, um, we would just kind of mature out and rotate leadership. Uh, so we need a motion.
I'll move to, are we approving the slate of written? Is that?
Yeah.
The terminology, I'll move to approve the slate of written.
Um, motion, second. Second. Second, by Matt. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No opposed. Um, committees, so we have Quality, MVC Finance, Compliance, Foundation, PFAC, and Joy Districts.
I move to keep the committee assignments as written for this year into next year.
All second.
Mm-hmm.
Motion by John, second by Terry, to keep the committees the same. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, um, board calendar.
Hannah, I ask you to table that till Thursday. I need the great brain of Mandy Wee.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment, tell her how sad it looks without the usual events?
I know.
Yeah, it looks a little barren.
Oh, just I didn't expect that to hit me so hard. It's really sad.
I know Mandy's still just trying to make sure she's got everything on there, but we.
There's another quick question on the calendar. So if we vote on the calendar, not now, of course, but if we vote on the calendar, the special meetings list, would we also need to, like we did this year, vote to have the special meetings, you know, in October or whatever? Because this year we had to vote to change the meeting times.
Oh, the November, December meetings?
Right, to November and December.
I thought that was already taken from last year. I thought we voted that in.
Yeah, so if we vote on a calendar that looks something like this, we then have to vote again in October to approve the change, the special meetings.
I believe the answer to that is no, but I would want to, so a special meeting is any meeting that is not in the closing time that's been called out by resolution. So even though you conduct the regular business of the board, it's on a different day, it's on a different location, it's a special meeting. I don't know, um, I think we'd want to be very deliberate in October about calling out for the, the public that the meeting was not going to be at the right deal of time. But once it's approved, maybe we would include a motion. It would need to be approved by motion in the calendar.
So, uh, I guess we should make sure that everyone's okay, especially with the special meetings. Those are going to be different from the fourth, Thursday.
It's interesting that December's is still in December, at least as written currently.
But does anyone have any problem with, I mean, it'd be good to figure it out now. If everyone's fine with the thirtieth, then we'll leave it as the thirtieth. But if there's anyone who might need you, it might be good to attack it now as opposed to in October.
My schedule was exciting and after half, something would be conflicting, but now I'm.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Like, I kind of like a December of the draft, you know, I mean, we know what's going to have, come up.
It's true, we can't come back to it.
Yeah.
But as, as of now, people are.
Yeah, I'm happy with you. Julie, does that make all of the meetings that would be held while we vacate for lab?
All.
Construction, that they would all be special?
Yep. And if you were to change the time of the meeting, you would.
So we'll push that into next month, old business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item B is board self-evaluation, so, um.
So I did have a chance to talk with Greg Davidson of the CEO Network. Um, that was the firm that we engaged at the beginning of twenty twenty to help us with our strategic work. My discussion with Greg was that, um, I feel like we, through some collective meetings that we've been having and the work that, that Scott and Dr. Martin and, and Ron and Mandy are doing, are really doing a chunk of the work that we'd engaged the CEO Network to do. So I asked him to shift, we've already paid for that engagement and we haven't been able to execute on some of it. I asked him to shift that work, that scope over to assist with the, uh, board self-evaluation in January, and he said they would be willing to do that. So he can help provide some tools and just some discussions to the board.
He'd be like a facilitator?
Yep, yep. And I, I proposed a remote engagement for that, so, but again, the tools and, and.
Meaning he would be remote?
He would be.
Is that, um, is he, does he live far or is it?
He lives in Seattle, if we, if we wanted him to come, he'd be.
Okay. I mean, is that something that we could assess as we get closer?
Yeah, what does the board think about, um, really, so we're not really, we've paid, we've already paid.
Right, so we're just shifting the scope of the work.
My hope is that we would have a facilitator on site, because I just think there's something lost when, especially when just one person is not in the room. But I would be interested to hear your thoughts.
I agree, I agree. Yeah, in person, so.
Okay.
We could make sure, we could, just one mistake, we could really.
Go with that.
So he seems, he seems pretty favorable.
Okay, great.
Carrie, any comments on, or John? I think it's a good idea. It's been a while since we.
Yeah, and a fresh tool and sort of discussion points and it'd be nice to get it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, CEO annual evaluation, so that is coming up. Um, so Erica and myself will work on that. We will meet with, uh, SLT and then we'll bring some documents back to the board and, and have the board add, hopefully not edit too much, Matt and John, but. It was easy last year, because. No, I'll, I'll, I need, I need the help, so. Um. Yeah, so the, so it was a good, it was a good process and, uh, you get, you get input and evaluations from, from us. You get from the SLT. We have written comments and also met with them. Yeah. In person, they got, uh, got some feedback that way, so it's a pretty thorough process. Yeah. So.
And Foundation and District too.
Right, right, yeah.
That sounds good to me.
So we'll get, we'll get that.
And are we doing a salary survey, research as one aspect of this?
Yeah, I think Manda's, Manda's working on.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Did she have a?
Good.
You're welcome.
Anything else? So if not, we'll, we'll close, we'll move into executive session. Um, there will, there will not be any votes after executive session. Um, how long?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes?
Ooh, okay.
Okay.
And how long before executive session starts?
Um.
Box one is over there.
Yeah, so.
So immediately, essentially?
It must start in five, five minutes?
Forty.
Yeah? Okay.
Uh, we need three resolutions for clarifying, can we make sure of moving around? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, hi.
Thanks, everyone.
Cutting down the heart for sure.
Good night, guys. Just sticking around.